Welcome to the work session for Monday, July 20, 2020. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Sciringi.
President.
Councilwoman Resnadi.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burr.
Present.
Councilman Strawn.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
It's seven here.
So Lieutenant Sonnen. All right, let's go to Paul Palmer, please. RL 120-139.
This is so far an annual program by both these kids. They have painted a couple of our buildings, one on the outside, one on the inside, and it's an opportunity for them to continue to help us out and help themselves out. So.
Questions or comments on this? 10142, Paul, please.
Okay, in authorized the mayor to enter into agreement with play-by-design. They are the people who designed and built our space originally, and we are with those folks again this time to help us build, rebuild our space.
Any idea when this would start, Paul?
It's to start. There'll be some prep work, but the actual build will start August 17th, and hopefully won't last more than a week to 10 days.
Oh, wow.
We're we have, we were getting a little nervous, but the carpenters' union has, we talked, I talked to them this morning. They're on board to send us skilled carpenters every day for three shifts. So it sounds like things will move along pretty quickly.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
John Pack for RL 20-141, please.
Yeah, we're looking to amend the 2020 DPW budget to create a new position called Heavy Equipment Operator Training and to defund the heavy equipment position. The reason is we want to get employee training associated with all of our maintenance of roads, refuge, and snowmobile equipment. That hasn't been done in the past, and I think it's not necessary.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Mr. Paddock.
Awesome.
Let me know once that one comes up. You done now?
Yeah, you should be.
All right, there's an addition to our agenda. Lieutenant Bidwell, are you out there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Lieutenant Dave Bidwell, the Binghamton Police Department. Do you want me to get into the two grants?
Could you explain what the grants are, please?
Absolutely, two grants. First get, the first grant is the give grant. The give grant is through DCJS. What it does is it funds a senior crime analyst for the crime analyst center. It funds the salary infringe for an FIO, which is a field intelligence officer through Binghamton Police Department. It also gives us, I think it's $23,000 in overtime, $4,000 for training, and an additional $4,000 in overtime through SEPTAD overtime, which is crime prevention through environmental design. The cops grant funds partially two new police salaries. I believe it's three quarters, and then the city picks up the other 25% over a three-year span, which is less than the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Paddock. Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Oh, I'm doing well. How are you?
I cannot complain. It's beautiful outside.
It's a little warm for my taste, but.
Well, I am sitting in the air-conditioned in the house, though.
Oh, okay. No, I don't have that luxury. So thank you for coming to present these two pieces of legislation. I had two questions. First of all, you said crime reduction through environmental design. Can you explain a little bit more what that means, please?
Yeah, so what SEPTAD is and our, the city of Binghamton SEPTAD team is actually probably the most proactive in New York State. We did just do a webinar for DCJS throughout the whole state to present to the state last week, which was pretty successful. I want to say there was a webinar, it was like 375 people who signed up for it. But what crime about, what crime prevention through environmental design is? So we do things through the community where the community might have issues with the location. We could have, we, or we'll look at a location that generates a lot of call volume. So we'll just go out to that location, we'll see what the issue is, whether it's, you know, poor lighting, or maybe they have too much. I mean, it really could be anything. It could be a store that has too much signage in the windows where police officers couldn't see inside if the store was being run. So we might go to the store owner and just give them a recommendation, you know, to take the signage down. But things like, you know, poor, poor lightage, maybe an alleyway that should be fenced off. So it's really a bunch of different, different environmental factors that we just go out, we do an assessment, and then we touch base with the property owner, property manager, and give them our recommendations.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my, my other question was, was there, what, what prompted the application for the grant for two extra police officers? Was there a need for that? Is there data to show that these two extra officers would reduce crime?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for, for me, my position in this department, assigned from, assigned from the crime analysis center and crime prevention, I just researched grants. So, I mean, we've, we've written co-op grants with ACBC. I just seen that this was an opportunity to help fund two positions. So we wrote it, and we were approved for it. So really, my position is I do the, you know, like, we write the grants, we research the grants, we write them, and then if, you know, whether we accept them or not, I leave that to people who are on a higher level than myself.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Also, and Bert.
Yes, Officer Bidwell. The 250,000 for the two police officers. Now, it says that they, says that they were newly appointed police officers. So does that mean that they were already funded through the, through the budget already? And that this 250,000?
So this grant is going to be effective for the spring of next year. So when we, however, however many members we hire next year, I want to say our minimum manpower, I think at this point, is 138 officers. I don't know where we technically stand right now. But so next spring, when we hire however many we hire, two of those positions would be funded through this grant.
So. So Chuck, so Chuck is here, I'm just wondering now, then, does that mean we'll save $250,000?
Not in one year.
Yeah, so we're saving money.
It's basically like a 50%.
So, so we're not, they're not getting more money, we're actually supplementing the money with the grant?
Yes.
Lovely. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Officer Bidwell.
Thank you, Officer.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Now, and Al Gardner for RL 20-146. Al, you out there? He's muted. You can text him. In the meantime, let's move on to RL 20-143, Charlie Persol. Chuck, you handle that one?
I think Charlie's out there. Is Charlie out there?
Yeah.
Mr. Persol, you out there? Al text me, can't connect the audio, he said, sorry. Jared, are you out there?
Yeah, I'm out here. I think Charlie just unmuted himself.
There we go. Yeah, I wasn't recognizing my clicks. Hello, Preston?
Mr. Persol, 20-143, please.
The board has asked me to present three transfer requests. The first one is a $25,000 increase for health insurance with the funds to come from excess in the personal services line.
Questions or comments on this?
Second one is a $15,000 increase to permits, penalties, and fees. We have sufficient on the line right now, but we're anticipating a speedies permit that we pay annually. It's a $15,500 charge, and that will complete the funds, so we're asking for a transfer into that from chemicals.
Questions or comments on this? Go on, Mr. Persol.
And finally, the equipment lease and rental. We didn't have sufficient on that budget line because we've come up with a program where we can actually subscribe to MSA, which is Modern Safety Appliances, to provide sensors that we need rather than purchase them. It's a $275 each fee, but this ensures that they never get stale. The components of these don't sit on shelves well, and this way we'll always have fresh ones, and it's a, it's a savings of about 60% of what it would cost to buy new.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Mr. Persol.
Right, thank you.
Al Gardner cannot connect the audio. Jared, can you handle Al Gardner's?
I, I will try to. Essentially, this is to accept a donation of gears, gear equipment from West Islip Fire Department. It's, it's as is condition. It's a couple of different things. I can't tell you exactly what a six-position gear rack is, but it's a donation of unused equipment from downstate to our fire department.
Questions or comments on this? Jared, thank you. And Chuck Shager, RL 20-140.
21-40 is to accept a donation from the Edward Stack Foundation to cover the cost of a engineering project done up at Fairview Park by Delta Engineers. This is something that's been ongoing with the Stack family in trying to improve the Fairview Park baseball and softball fields. I've attached the check that they sent us and the invoice from Delta Engineers.
Questions or comments on this?
The next one, RL 20-25, is an old invoice that we thought was a duplicate at one point. It's really not. So it's just cleaning up some old grant lines. Verify that. Yeah, these are all grant lines that are now closed out. It's $64,000 unspent funds that we had.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Sanders, tell us about RL 20-147, please.
Yes. This RL is a supplemental agreement number two with the New York State DOT. It's for construction and construction inspection supervision on the Belden Street Bridge over Pierce Creek and the Conklin Ave Bridge over Pierce Creek. It's additional funding from the state to cover the cost of construction and the inspection services. And you should know that the Belden Street is and the Conklin Avenue will be done next, next year, next spring.
Questions or comments on this? And RL 20-148, Ray.
Okay, this RL is to enter into a lighting agreement with New York State DOT for the proposed greenway along 434. And this is only for the portion that's in the city.
Questions or comments on this? Thank you, Ray.
Yes, sir.
Well, you got more, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got more, yep.
20-149.
Yep, 149. That's a, an agreement with the DOT, a utility agreement with the DOT for the same greenway. And in the paperwork, it says what it, what those are, it's to relocate and replace in-kind a city-owned water line and the pertinences impacted by the project. It's to adjust the sanitary manhole frame and lids to meet the new grading that will be required. It's to relocate some city-owned streetlights and to relocate plate readers which are used for traffic signals.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any anticipated interruptions to service while these replacements are taking place?
Generally, no, there may be some minor inconvenience, but generally their water lines have loopholes. Nobody gets really shut off, and if they do, it's only for a short duration, and they would get notified.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? All right, Ray, now to the last one, please.
Yes, 20-150, that's a no-cost time extension for the state poly-traffic signal upgrade and pedestrian streetscape improvements project. It's basically just to extend the no-cost time extension so that we can close out the paperwork. Even though the construction is done, the finalized paperwork is not complete, and DOT requires that you have a, an extension of time to be able to complete that.
Thank you, Ray. Any other questions or comments on this? Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
You're welcome.
Jared, on the 20-123, please.
Good evening. Is my audio okay? No, last time I had a little bit of an audio issue.
I can hear you fine.
Okay, good. Tonight is a proposed local law which would institute a social host ordinance in the city of Binghamton. Just some background on this. Starting back in 2018, our office began working with Binghamton University's Office of Alcohol and Other Drug Prevention as well as the newly formed Binghamton Campus Community Coalition to work on strategies to reduce high-risk drinking specifically with underage individuals in Binghamton. And in addressing those issues, what came up time and again was the efficacy of social host ordinances in other college towns in upstate New York, including Oneonta, Cortland, Genesee. And we started doing some research. And our model for this is, is from Oneonta. And just to kind of, again, give some history here. In Oneonta, which has a large student population like Binghamton, they had historically had issues with underage drinking and associated problems at, at house parties. In addition to the, you know, sort of immediate health and safety for these students, you had quality-of-life issues, which we all hear about. Binghamton public urination, littering, open containers. You know, an increase in the number of people going to the hospital, potential for increase in sexual assaults. So they looked at different strategies to address these concerns. And they, like we are following Oneonta, followed Cortland in adopting a social host ordinance which would hold accountable the hosts of gatherings that are, are serving minors with, with alcohol. And the way it kind of works right now is that police are called to a suspected party with underage drinking or a large gathering, and this is, of course, pre-COVID. They would do their best to assess the health and safety of the participants and then simply disperse the party. There is very limited tools to hold accountable the organizers or hosts at these parties that are distributing alcohol to, to minors. And certainly, you know, continuous ticketing of the participants was not necessarily effective either, and, and was not really done in any sort of regular basis. So following Oneonta and some of these other municipalities that have found this being very effective, you know, we talked to Binghamton University, the experts in their off-campus housing, their alcohol and other drug prevention, and from a, from their standpoint, this was viewed as a very effective means. It does two critical things. I know that you have a copy of the proposed legislation. It gives officers responding just another tool and an upward path of enforcement. There may be a situation where there's been a warning. They've tried to disperse, but there needs to be an arrest made for the hosts. The other thing that it's done in Oneonta, and this is according to Oneonta Police Chief Douglas Brenner, is that it's been a proactive tool where they keep track of problem locations and then in anticipation of a weekend or large events, in Binghamton's case, and maybe SantaCon or Parade Day, they will make sure that the people living at these places that are hosting these parties are aware of this, this law. And Oneonta's had good success even being preventative because they know that the city is taking it seriously. The, the legislation itself, again, is, is copied from Oneonta's law. We've run it past the Broom County District Attorney's Office, who agrees in principle with, with what we're looking to do. And we view it as filling a critical gap that will benefit not just the health and safety of folks under 21 in the city of Binghamton, but also reduce a lot of the quality-of-life issues that we have seen happen. The red cups, the public urination, the late-night calls that take up a lot of police resources. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk further on this.
Questions or comments on this? Also, with Riley?
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. President. Jared, thank you for this information and the background data. That was really beneficial to help understand where, from which the legislation came. And being in District 3, you know, I do receive a lot of calls about this. But I do also have some concerns. I wanted to know how the host would be determined when the, the potential arrest would be made. I don't, I know that's not something that will be in the legislation, but if the host is the, the ultimate party responsible, how would that be determined?
So typically, it will be determined by officers that are there or detectives. But in the case of a, maybe a, a house that has multiple folks that are on the lease, it would be the, the leases who would be responsible for the illegal activities happening on, on their, at their premises.
Now, and did this, I know the town and gown has not convened, but there is a subcommittee. Does the subcommittee review and also kind of give their approval of this document?
The, that has not been reviewed, but the Campus Community Coalition, which is staffed and, and kind of deals strictly on these things, has reviewed it and has endorsed it as a way to reduce high-risk drinking.
Okay, thank you.
Jared, if I may, just a quick question. Is this, is it just the Binghamton Police responding to those sort of concerns? Or is it Binghamton University Police as well? Are they connected to this?
This would be a Binghamton Police response, you know, would be where our patrol officers are going.
Okay.
Also, and Bert.
Because most of these houses have you know, multiple leases in them. If my daughter, let's say it's in Buffalo where my daughter went, and she's not having the party, but cops come and they're going to arrest everybody who's a leasing on it, I mean, how does? So then I would have to go get a lawyer to get her out of jail, and how would all, how would all that work?
Well, there's, you know, with, with any, with any ordinance or legislation that results in, in tickets or arrests, there's certainly discretion, and the police will try to use any means necessary to determine who the host of the party is. And, you know, certainly in a circumstance where one or more of the students is, is out of town or is not present, that, that could be considered. And that's why education will be the biggest part of this, is that I, I view the, the teeth of this having more to do with frequent house parties that are run that are responded to, and then detectives, given the information that was gathered, the evidence that was gathered on these, the nights that these happen, will then investigate and see who ultimately can be held responsible. Right now, they don't have that tool. Then, of course, you know, it's up to the district attorneys, et cetera, to, to prosecute and, and fairly carry this out.
Is it going to be a misdemeanor or what is it?
It's a violation. It's, it's not a misdemeanor felony.
I'm getting a ticket for.
Councilman Sciringi, have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Two things, so Jared, I was wondering if maybe A, you could maybe speak a little more to some of the collaborative aspects of this piece of legislation between Binghamton City Hall, the BPD, and the University Police Department, and as well as I took the time to contact Corp Counsel with some similar questions that I'm hearing from my colleagues as I had some concerns related to private property and things of that nature, as well as the, the level of violation or misdemeanor that something like this potentially might be. And I wasn't sure if Corp Counsel might be able to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Yes, there's no, there's no loss of rights here, kind of Councilman Byrne's point. You still have to prove that the person involved was somebody who was actually hosting the party. If you had a three-family house, finding out where, you know, which one of those three families or units was hosting the party. Who, who bought the keg? Right, there's evidence somewhere of who purchased the keg. But those are all things that would be part of any investigation. There's no loss of constitutional rights here. It doesn't change somebody's ability to have privacy in their home. And as Jared pointed out, it's a violation. So it's handled when, we're not trying to give students a criminal record. Right, we're trying to cut down on underage drinking.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Jared.
Yeah, I was also one, I was also wondering, can anybody?
Yeah, I was also one, I was also wondering, can anybody, can anybody maybe speak to the potential issue of liability for property owners? Or potential tenants as well? How might that impact?
Well, it's always the case, if you were a host and you're providing alcohol to a minor and that minor should get into an accident, you're going to be potentially liable for the damages caused by that minor. So hopefully, this will convince people that they shouldn't be doing that.
Can I ask a question? So the host could potentially not be owner of the property, right?
Could be the tenant. The occupant is the most likely social host.
Right. So is the owner held liable in any way or not with this?
Not as part of this, but under current law, like if the owner knew that this was constantly going on, they had been written up before, somebody is going to argue that the owner is responsible, but this isn't changing that.
One more piece, one more question, just for clarification. So the burden of proof is on the tenant that is deemed the host of the party, correct?
Well, the burden of proof is always on the, you know, municipality, the arresting officers. But this creates a presumption that if there's a party on your property, there are minors that are drinking, and you're the ones who are allowing them to drink on your property, you're the social host.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thanks.
And Grace, please.
So RL 20-144 is another Binghamton Rumble Pony Skyward Display RL. They're going to do two more movie nights like they did on July 3rd, which is July 31st in a rain day of August 1st, and September 4th with a rain day of September 5th. So it's just the same exact thing we passed a couple of weeks ago, but we had to add these, we have to add these dates in.
Want to make comments on this?
Is it a movie included? This is a movie night?
I believe so.
They make it also possibly trivia night.
And the next one is RL 20-145, sale of a portion of 1209 vessel F and permanent easement with Richard property development. This is a small portion of land. It's relating to the number five project. It's supposed to be used for charging stations for electric cars. And so they're trying to get this done as soon as they can.
Want to make comments on this? Thank you, Grace. Now we're in a discussion for the RL 20-151.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, can I jump in? It's not only the sale of that small portion of land, but also an easement, because they're going to put a new curb, widen the, and widen the entrance.
Okay. All right, we go back to, want your comments on that one now?
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just wondering why, why this is expedited?
Because according to the clerk's office, they're interested in getting this done as soon as possible. I think they're starting construction over there, so they want this done.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, move on to discussion, RL 20-151, a resolution condemning hateful acts and racism. So there's been some back and forth on this a little bit, as far as what was going in, what was going out. So we.
Yeah, we put the new one in.
So originally, I emailed Councilwoman Freeman back and said, we're going to remove that about the 9/11, and then Councilwoman dropped right up again, so I put it back in here. So we could serve, this is not done, obviously, not done by any means. We're still going to talk about this, and whoever wants to start, I'm open for it. What wants to start the conversation, go ahead.
Well, I just want, this is Councilwoman Riley. Just point of clarification that both the grant and this document both have the same RL numbers, 2151. So can we please clarify so that we can make sure that there is?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I will make that change when I go into the office tomorrow. It was just an oversight on the numbering. So I will change that.
Councilwoman Riley, you here?
Yes, I did.
She's going to correct that tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Freeman, I guess we'll start with you, the line about probably 911. You're interested in having that removed. Can you explain yourself on that?
Sure. So there's, there's a couple of reasons why I feel like that's not appropriate to include. And before I say, I do just want to say that overall, I think that the legislation looks great. And most of it, I do agree with and feel not only comfortable but excited about voting yes on. However, this, this one clause doesn't sit right with me because earlier in the legislation, we are condemning the violent murder of a black man at the hands of police. And then in the same legislation, to then suggest that citizens call the police is tone deaf, in my opinion. Also, this, it, it feels like we're not adding any new information. You know, we're sort of advising the community to call 911, when I feel like that's something that's, you know, most people know already, that's something that's ingrained, starting from a very young age. So I just, I don't feel like it's the appropriate place to put that sort of piece of advice or, you know, advisory in the same piece of legislation where we're acknowledging that sometimes, you know, as in the instance of George Floyd, the police are, you know, act in a racist way. And our criminal justice system is also, has systemic issues when it comes to being racist. So I just, I don't feel like this is the time and place to encourage calling 911.
Any other questions?
Yeah, my question, Councilwoman Freeman, is I don't necessarily have an issue with it being in or out in and of itself. But my issue is, I just want to be sure. I mean, I don't know if this is a national statement or a local statement, but are you suggesting people in Binghamton shouldn't call 911? That's what I was confused about. I mean, I don't know who they, you know, and maybe there shouldn't be a call to action in here, but, I mean, just reading the statement, you know, that people are basically afraid to call 911. Is that the case in Binghamton? Is there any statistics to back that up?
I, I think the reality is, is that 911, when people, so someone like me, for example, a young white woman, when I call 911, I'm fairly certain that the police will respond and protect me and listen to my side of the story. But I, I have friends in the area that will not call 911 because they can't be sure that when the police arrive, they will not be immediately profiled. And they, they don't feel comfortable calling 911 because they are fairly confident that the police will escalate the situation. So I, you know, from my personal experience, I feel comfortable calling 911. But I'm also cognizant of, you know, where I am when I do that. And I know that some of my friends who are black do not trust 911 to come and protect them.
Other questions or comments on this?
Okay, that's, that's fine. I don't have an issue with it coming out of the statement, but I do think if that's, my issue here is that's, I'm not, I'm not questioning what you're saying at all. And if that's the case, I just want to say, I know this is a non-binding resolution, but that's, that's a problem. And if that's the case, then I'm not sure what we can do down the road. Obviously, we're not going to solve all this tonight. We need to figure that out. I just want to, I just want this to be something that we're not just talking about, that we're doing something. And I appreciate this conversation because I think it's constructive. And I'm not saying, and I'm not doubting what you're saying, and it may very well be true. But if it is, like I said, that doesn't need to be in the resolution, then we need to, you know, call Chief Zakuski in at some point to talk to us or do something to talk about that. Because that's, I'm not okay with that either. And I agree with you. It probably is different if you or I call 911. It could be, but it shouldn't be. And I'm not sure whether it is or isn't, but if it's not for certain people, then we need to figure that out, at least try. And I guess that's kind of where I was at with it, because I'm just hoping that this leads us to be able to talk about tangible items that can help our whole community. Because that's obviously the end of it. That's, we want warm and inviting. We want it to be something that we can all work towards. So I'm just thinking that maybe, you know, we should have a few, a special session or a future work session or some, I don't know what the proper format would be to have the chief come and talk to us about things like that, but I think it might be appropriate.
Councilwoman Burns? Councilwoman Riley, one more second there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First off, I think it's great that we have the both parties working together on this resolution. And it is a non-binding resolution. But it brings to mind, what Phil was just saying, and Abiba, what brings to mind is that this, what's coming in the future, in the near future, the order from the governor about every city coming up with a new policing law, I want the, he's, the order is to pass it into law. So I think that we should, I'm hoping, I mean, that the mayor is going to include us. I would like to be included very much in bringing the, not just the chief. I want to talk to patrolmen. I want to talk to people in the, you know, I want to bring community members. I would like to find people that feel the way that Abiba says that they feel. I would like to bring them in and have them talk to us. And before we pass this law, so I think that what's coming in the future, the fact that we're working together on this is a very good start to the process that we're all about to enter. So just throwing that out there, that I'm hoping that the mayor includes us. Thank you.
Councilwoman Riley, please.
Yes, thank you, President Scanlon. I want to echo the sentiment of my colleagues. I am very much, I very much appreciate the work that was done to put forth your comments and thoughts. I am thankful that Phil said that although he may not be familiar with some of the sentiment in the community, that he wants to hear and learn more about it, because it is, in fact, a reality. There is an Instagram page, Black at Bean, which talks about racial bias and inequalities, not only on the campus, but in the community. Now, it's similar to the Instagram account that many have followed regarding the sexual assault. But again, I think it's worth looking at. It's anecdotal. It's not the data or the references you requested, but it is a starting point, a reference from which you can start to review voices in our community. Because as you know, many students reside in Binghamton. I do look forward to future conversations, but I want everyone to think about this. This document is a position statement. And it tells our constituents how we will review legislation and advocate on their behalf. We don't necessarily need to commit them to an action because it is our voice. It's really us saying what we believe and what we as a council will do to move, to retain the values of Binghamton as city council members. So I agree with Councilwoman Freeman that we don't need to tell them what to do. We can do that in other documents. But if we keep the tone of this, it again sets the framework by which we will review legislation, how we will craft legislation, particularly as we again, as Councilman Burns mentioned, are held to the revamping of policies, the revamping and development of policies as per the executive order. So I look forward to these conversations. I look forward to our residents bringing their feedback about their issues and working with you guys to, again, address the concern. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment on the line that references 911? Is anybody else opposed, is anybody opposed to removing that from this RL? Hearing no one, we'll have that removed from the RL. Does anybody have other additions or deletions to this RL? Councilwoman Riley?
I just had a question, just for clarification. And again, we did, there are some subtle changes, some subtle nuances, but there were the removal of the other victims in this past few months. Why were they removed and George Floyd highlighted only? Breonna Taylor was taken out. Ahmaud Arbery was taken out. And Breonna's killers are still pretty much out there. I think one police has been arrested but not prosecuted. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to know.
I could, I could try to answer. So all of these are ongoing investigations, obviously. George Floyd was horrendous watching that, and it hit everybody, and it was, it wasn't anything anybody wants to see. So we left him in there because that was, seemed to be the focal point of what's, and there's just, there's other, obviously, cases out there, Councilwoman Riley, no doubt. But we left that one in there because that seems to be the focal point.
But it's not the focal point. I think the focal point is the entire legislation or the resolution. It is unfortunate that there are so many. That's, that's, so I just want to make sure.
There was, I'm sure there's more than three cases. I think Councilwoman Freeman had three, maybe three people in there. There's, there's a lot more than that, obviously.
Yes.
Where do we start? Where do we stop? I mean, that's my question.
Sure. The other two that are under investigation, what if we added in the names of people that, it was that big guy in New York City who was selling the cigarettes? I can't think of his name.
Eric Garner.
Eric Garner. I think that's a settled case.
But I mean, like I said.
We all watched that.
I don't know where we start, where we stop with this. I mean, I, I don't have a problem adding the names back. I don't. I mean, I have no problem adding names back and Eric Garner, but Garner, I don't know where we start, stop. I mean, I want to hear everybody else's opinion on this, please.
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason why the, I included those three, well, actually, so I believe that I mentioned this. I modeled the legislation closely after Burlington, Vermont. And they included those three, I think, because those were the three highest-profile cases at the time that the legislation was written. Of course, you know, it's horrendous that there are so many household names that we could include in this. But I think those were the three, and I think they also highlight three different issues where there's, like, George Floyd was a direct police interaction as a result of calling 911. Breonna Taylor was a no-knock raid, and Ahmaud Arbery was, I think, just white supremacist vigilante. So I think it, the reason why those three were highlighted was it's, it affirms that there are, that racism can be. affirms that there are, that racism can be deadly in many forms. These are three examples of how that can manifest.
Does anybody have a, a problem with putting in, forgive me if I say these names wrong, Ahmaud Arbery and Breonna Taylor. Everybody have a problem with those back in this, along with Eric Garner? See, no problems. We'll put those three names included with George Floyd in this. Any other additions or deletions on this? Um, Councilwoman Riley, yes?
Councilwoman Riley, I do want to ask, I know we had um, an email earlier about the addition of amendments, additional amendments. And if we are really specifically talking about equal rights, um, I do understand why they were added, but in order to focus on this, these points, did we need to include the right to vote? Amendment 15? I mean, not that it hurts, but what does it add to the points that we were discussing? I know, Phil, you, you brought that up earlier.
Well, I mean, it, it might not add to that specific point. I mean, I'll be honest with you. My issue with this in total is, if you read it, it's so, um, and I, I don't know how to say this. I, I'm hoping that, I just, I just trusting you guys to, to hear what I'm saying. You read this, whether it's from a local perspective or from, even if our policemen read this, it's so, you would think that we were, you know, that nothing has ever been done in a, in a good way to improve any of this. And I know I'm being a little bit cynical or facetious, but I mean, it's so dark and so harsh. And I'm not saying that that's not appropriate in some of these situations that are being applied here, but there's nothing in here that, and I'm not saying that that's, I mean, that was a long time ago, right? But, but I just was thinking, we're pointing out all of these issues. There's nothing in here that even, you wouldn't even think that anything has been done uh, to help the cause in, you know, since the beginning of time. And I mean, that, I know that's a very facetious statement. I don't mean it exactly how I'm saying it, but I mean, when you look at the verbiage in here of, of de-brutalize and dehumanize, I mean, illegal killings by law enforcement, which I don't, I don't really like the way that statement is totally worded. And I just thought, you know, we're throwing in the fort, all these different things. Let's, let's package the, you know, at least those amendments that went together during that period of time that, that moved the, 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 the compass forward somewhat in the, the idea of, of, of helping. I mean, certainly helps with, with racist issues that the voting was approved, that the slavery was ended. You know, we can go through a history lesson of all time, how many people died to end slavery, blah, 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 blah. But I just, I just, I don't know. That's just where I'm kind of coming from the heart, that I look at all these statements. And, you know, quite frankly, if I'm Binghamton Police and I read this, I'm thinking, you know, they talk, you know, and I know we talked a second ago about 911, and I want to have that conversation with the chief and people that like, like Councilman Burns said, that people that feel that way, but I just feel like there's nothing in here that, that sheds any, anything to the, we have so far to go, but we have, you know, certainly some progress has been made over the, the course of time. Um, and it just so focuses on these events. I mean, how many other issues that are affecting, you know, our minority communities are out there right now. Um, look at that beautiful boy that got killed in Brooklyn. And I realize that that's not the part of this thing, but that's just where my mind's at. I feel like this is so targeted on the police. Um, and I'm not sure, you know, if our police are going to feel that we're beating them. I hope they don't. Um, and I hope that we can address the issues that Councilwoman Freeman addressed, that someone in our community may feel that way. Um, and I don't even know if I'm even explaining myself well. I'm just kind of coming from the heart of what I feel. And when I read this, when I first read this reiteration, I thought to myself, my, my, my God, like we are, you know, this is horrific. Nothing, nothing good has ever happened. We should all, you know, pack it up and, and uh, head somewhere else. And I, I don't think that that's true, but I know that we have a long ways to go. So that's just a long explanation of kind of from the heart, um, just spewing out kind of what's on my, on my mind. I think we have a long ways to go. I think we, um, I just think there's a lot to do, and I want, hope that we can have honest conversations about it. But I just felt that the verbiage is so severe and so harsh and so dark. Um, and maybe, and that's appropriate in a lot of situations, and I get that. We don't want to water it down. We don't want to sugarcoat it. Um, but that's just kind of what I was thinking, like, and maybe that's the wrong way to do it. Maybe there's another way to craft what I'm thinking. Maybe not. Um, but that's really kind of where my mindset was at when I threw that.
Let's, let's circle back.
So I apologize for being long-winded, but that's just kind of, you know, when I read, first read this, what I, what I felt.
Also, let's
Can I say something, Mr. President? Is that okay? I, I just, is that okay? Sorry. No, I just wanted to um, say to Phil, thank you for, for sharing that. And I know that, you know, you're trying really hard to make sure that you're heard and understood. And you're right, there's just, you know, so many dark things that have happened throughout history to um, folks of color and just the injustice that has happened. And, and we support this um, resolution. It's just that when you read it, I, I, I hear, you know, what you're saying, that it feels that we're blanketing like every single police officer, um, you know, that it's just one blanket statement. And I talked a little bit about that and how uh, we need to be careful with those sort of things. I talked about that a couple of weeks ago. Um, and in the end, I think, Phil, you know, you're really thinking about our own police officers and, you know, here in our community. Um, and, you know, what the, might feel like. I don't know, but um, no, I just, I appreciate what you just said. That's all I wanted to say.
That's, okay. Councilwoman Burns, go ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, and uh, to piggyback on what everybody's talking about, the, just so that, you know, I had a friend of mine, uh, Binghamton policeman for many years, Jerry Grace, who died recently, and if all, if all policemen were like him, there, there would be no trouble in this world. And just wondering, you know, with, the, the last sentence here where we say that this piece of legislation aims to make the city of Binghamton an even more welcoming and inclusive place. So we are saying that it is welcoming, but we're going to try to make it more. So could we say something like aims to make, aims to make the city of Binghamton and the Binghamton Police Department even more welcoming than, you know, I mean, so that we're just not?
Let's, let's, uh, let's, hold on, let's circle back here for a minute. So Angela Riley, you brought up the, the line about the right to vote.
Yes.
Correct? And you want that omitted, correct?
Well, I just think it takes away from the, the focus of this particular piece, because we're not talking about voting rights. And I do understand the uh, 1789, and there were three, but we are really specifically talking about equal protection under law, and that's the question. So if
Does anybody have a problem removing the line, the right to vote in this RL?
No, no, no. All entire 15th Amendment and possibly the 13th Amendment.
So does anybody, anybody have a problem with the 13th Amendment and the 15th Amendment?
Can we just talk a little more um, about why, again, I'm sorry, why we want this removed?
Because the focus
I'm going to try and pull it up again. I'm sorry, because I just lost it. Go ahead.
The focus is not really on the right to vote. We do talk about slavery as, um, talk about, I think, again, we talk about
I guess I'm just wondering, how is this diluting this in any way? Um, you know, and just, just an honest question. How, how do you feel that this is diluting the um, the focus or the
Yes.
The goal?
Yes.
Okay. You, you feel that it is?
Yes, because we're not talking about voting rights, and we're not really highlighting slavery. But if you want to talk about the abolishment of slavery, then that's fine. But again, voting rights, we can have an entirely different resolution to discuss, because again, that's still an issue. We're trying to push legislation now in the Senate about voting rights, right? So um, I just think that's not part of this position statement. It is a valuable amendment, but it's not part of this particular resolution.
So again, um, let me ask again, does anybody have a problem removing the 13th and the 15th Amendment comments in this RL? We'll remove both of those. Any other deletions? If, if you, if everybody would like, we can expedite this to both of us on Wednesday. If anybody has a concern about that, we certainly can delay that. We'll put any agenda to expedite it for Wednesday. There's some pending legislation here. Um, Grace, you'd like to read those, please?
Yes, I can read them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So RL 20-118, amend the 2020 capital fund budget to close bond lines that are no longer active. RL 20-119, amend the 2020 capital fund budget to close serial bond revenue line for grant funds received and increase federal and state aid for transportation projects for grant funds to pay down Binghamton bonds. RL 20-120, change order number three with John W. Danforth regarding the Binghamton Johnson City Joint Sewer Treatment Facility Phase Three project. RL 20-125, authorize a pilot agreement with opportunities for Brum and Channingo Inc. for 542 State Street. RL 20-130, authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with New York State DOT to maintain, repair, and energize lighting and salt degree weight projects. RL 20-132, amend the fire department budget. RL 20-133, amend the 2016 bond ordinance for water filtration sludge extraction system. RL 20-134, agreement with Binghamton Tech LLC to lease a real property reused by the Binghamton Fire Department at 151 Court Street. RL 20-135, agreement with Keystone for design services for a new fire station. RL 20-136, amend the 2020 general fund budget for the purchase of real property at 235 Court Street for $220,000.
Okay, thank you, Grace.
Yes.
Who, uh, somebody have some questions on these pending RLs?
Yes.
Councilwoman Riley?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley, and I, I'm not sure if Chuck Shager has left the building. Is he still on?
No, he left.
He's gone.
Okay. And then I know Ken just replied to me. Um, so I had a few questions about um, amending the bond ordinance, um, questions about our bond. Hold one second, I'm going to pull up the email. Um, just about, because again, now we did talk, have the mayor and the chief at the meeting, but we had not, well, I did not know we had the RL. They weren't in our packet at that time. So we didn't formally go through the RL. Um, I know it's here now as proposed legislation, but give me a second. So just a few questions. I know we received a few during some of the comment period last business meeting. So two, um, and of course, I'm sorry, I don't have the RLs here in front of me. That I wanted to send these out in hopes that they would give it to us before the meeting. But where, what budget line, do we know the budget line from which the lease of the temporary housing for the fire station will be? It is mentioned that we will use bond funds to purchase
Councilwoman Riley, excuse me.
Yes.
I don't think there's anybody here to answer your questions.
Okay.
That would be Chuck directly. He was sitting, I don't know where he went, he was sitting here, but so I, I would suggest to put them, did you put them up, write it to Chuck?
I did. You're on that email as well.
Yeah, I saw. I stayed, I just see him, yes. But there's nobody here to answer these questions right now for you.
Okay, so we will, I will wait to hear from him?
Yes, I think that's the best, that's our best move at this point, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
That worked.
All right, other questions on pending legislation? I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.
Thank you. Have a good night.